Thank you, clarks. Can I make note that through the dinner break councillor Davis was sworn in as a councillor for MacDowell. Welcome, welcome to the council councillor Davis. Councillor Shree, you are speaking and can I invite, can I invite you to return to the microphone? Councillor Shree.
Thanks, Mr Chair. Yeah, I was literally just going to stand up for a minute to thank and congratulate the Labor councillors for bringing the motion to the chamber. I am, as I mentioned before, I do have some concerns about the specific wording and I have some philosophical and ideological questions about the underlying values and motives that this is pushing, but I can see that the, the general intent of the motion is positive and, and well intentioned and I think, yeah, while I do have those concerns, I understand that the councillors are coming from a, a good place, so to speak. But yeah, I do reiterate that I don't have a lot of faith that unless there's a genuine commitment to sovereignty-
Councillors, I know we've all just come back from dinner, but can we just all please just pay the speaker your respect? Councillor Shree.
I just do reiterate that unless there's a genuine and meaningful commitment to sovereignty and treaties and, and coming to terms with ongoing colonisation and, and the legacy of invasion, that I think some of this stuff might be a little bit tokenistic.
Are there further speakers? Councillor Richards.
Thank you, Mr Chair. Look, I just want to put on record, you know, this is a very important topic. You know, the first Australians here have practised so many things in their traditions for tens of thousands of years, through using the stars to navigate through to, you know, Mother Earth to keep them with nutrients. But the reason I say this is that to move forward with this kind of task, it's not one that can be taken lightly, it's not one that can be politicised, it's one that actually will need to take time. And in saying that, you know, we've got to recognise what they've gone through to where we are today, but still take all those traditions moving forward into the next generations as well, for all Australians. And, you know, I say this because, you know, in the, in the spirit really of a bipartisan kind of approach to this, we could have all worked together to come to a greater place of a unified message for this today. So I'm grateful it is being put forward and I want to acknowledge the work that's been done by all Australians to get to this point. But in particular, you know, we've got the new minister, Ken White, who, you know, fortunate for us, he is of an indigenous background and that is a significant thing for all Australians. But for his own journey, you know, being from an indigenous background can sometimes polarise yourself as well with all of those of your, of your same background. So he has taken this not lightly, he knows to ensure to move this forward so it doesn't fail, it's to go slowly. Because his concern which he mentioned in the Sydney Morning Herald was it's too important in the scheme of Australian society, particularly for indigenous Australians, to lose a referendum because we don't, because we hadn't done our work properly would be a major setback for at least 10 or 20 years. So I make that statement because, you know, tonight we're here moving a motion, but this is a motion that's for all Australians, it's the nation that needs to come together on this. And this man is the right person to actually start that discussion, both with our federal members and colleagues, but also our traditional owners of the lands. It's not for us to pass judgement, it's not for us to push forward that Brisbane becomes the first of something to be involved with all this, it's actually to be cohesive, cohesive in a message that we acknowledge the tens of thousands of years of people before us and what they've done here. But at the same time, to acknowledge the people that are here now as well, because we need to move forward together as a united group of peoples, working for our next generation to appreciate what we've gone through with change. So this is an evolving process and certainly it will take time to, to get it right, but I know that it'll be done in the way that respects all Australians. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Further speakers? The councillor Cassidy, just before I move to the next point, if you wanted to speak again on this motion, I'd encourage you to speak now because it's an amended motion, you won't have a right to reply, so if you want to speak again, now's the best time. Councillor Cassidy.
Oh, thank you, thank you, Mr Chair. I appreciate that, you know, the, the motion has been amended and we have supported that and I think, as I said before, the intent of the original motion is still there, that at some point, hopefully quite soon, we will amend our constitution, our nation's constitution, and put at the centre of that document, which is the birth of our nation under law, the rightful place of Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people. So going forward, I do thank the administration for supporting the intent of, of this motion here tonight. There are, we certainly aren't moving, we're certainly not the first, you know, organisation to be moving in this direction. Some of the nation's largest law firms and private enterprises have got in behind supporting the Uluru Statement from the Heart, both constitutional recognition and also truth telling commission to ensure that when treaties are made, they are made properly. Some of those institutions, of course, are BHP, Curtin University, Herbert Smith Freehills Lawyers, KPMG, Lend Lease, the National Rugby League, PWC Australia, Qantas, Richmond Football Club Rio, Tinto, and the list goes on. So this, this does, and that shows, I think, that there is a really broad support right across Australia from all levels of government and here we are showing that support in the largest local government in Australia, through private enterprise and also I think the community is on board. Research by the Australia Institute showed that a clear majority of people actually support the central tenets of the Uluru Statement from the Heart, treaty making, the Commission of Truth Telling and of course, finally and importantly, the First Nation voice in the constitution. So I appreciate the chamber's support for this motion in adding our voice as a local government, as the largest local government in Australia, to ensure that, that our nation, we can heal one of the, the wounds that we have had since our birth as a modern democracy in that Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people will be put at the centre of, of what we do. I do just want to wrap up by acknowledging, and he's in the public gallery tonight, Mr Eddie Sinnett, a strong advocate and campaigner for this, and commend him, he's a local resident in Myward and commend him for the work that he has done on this and will continue to do and the contribution that he, alongside a whole lot of other people, continue to make in this space and to make Australia a better country.
Any further speakers? I'll now put the amended motion, all those in favour say aye.
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Division. There's a division called by councillor Cassidy and councillor Shree. Ayes to my right, ayes to my left, please ring the bells. Clacks, please, please read the result.
Mr Chair, the ayes have it, the warding being 25 in favour.
The ayes have it. Thank you, councillors, please return to your chairs.
Point of order, Mr Chairman, should that last count have been 26 with the new councillor for MacDowell in the chamber now?
No, no, that was, that was the correct numbers, we double checked, thank you. Councillors, are there any petitions? Councillor Richards?
Yes, Mr Chair, I have a petition requesting a review of the pedestrian crossing on Marshall Lane near the entrance to Glen Karren and Wayalawa Street in Kenmore.
Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr Chair, I have a petition requesting that the informal car park at Darcy Road, Seven Hills requires urgent asphalting and sealing by June 30.
Any further petitions? Can I please have a resolution?
Mr Chair, I move that the petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report.
Seconded. Been moved by councillor Richards, seconded by councillor Griffiths, that all petitions as presented be received and referred to the committee concerned for consideration and report. All those in favour say aye?
Aye.
The contrary, no. The ayes have it. Councillors, are there any statements required as a result of a councillor conduct review panel order? Councillor Johnston?
Yes, Mr Chairman, I rise to speak about a code of conduct matter that has been before this council. On Thursday last week, the Supreme Court of Queensland overturned-
Councillor, I think this is specifically, have you been ordered by the CCRP to speak now?
No, the Supreme Court has ordered the decision be overturned and I feel that should be put on the record.
Okay, well, I think, I think that's a matter for general business. All right. Are there any matters of general business? Councillor Huang?
Thank you, Mr Chair, I rise to speak on the award-winning Health and Wellbeing Expo for seniors hosted by Lions Club of Brisbane McGregor. Mr Chair, the Health and Wellbeing Expo hosted by Lions Club of Brisbane McGregor, winner of Lord Mayor's Australia Day Award Community Event of the Year, is an annual community event held at Hillsong Church in Mangravadd and is focused on the seniors of Brisbane. The expo offers free information sessions and information stores that encourage seniors to take proactive approach to their health and wellbeing. Over the years, with the support of the community, the event has grown from strength to strength. This year, there was more than 30 exhibitors and keynote speakers from various fields that provided valuable information and guidance to our seniors. Topics covered by speaker, covered by speakers include how to avoid scams, understanding your pension, women's health, misadventures in medication, sleep disorders and melanoma Displays from organisations such as Diabetes Queensland, United Care Queensland, Alzheimer's Australia and Queensland Ambulance Service also featured. This year, four councillors from the local area, councillor Adams, councillor Cunningham, councillor Marks and myself had a joint store to support the expo and to discuss the support available to seniors from Brisbane City Council. Attendance at the Health and Wellbeing Expo is increasing year after year and despite it being an all-day event, the majority of attendees didn't leave until the last speaker was done. The enthusiastic support for the expo is a credit to the McGregor Lions Club volunteers and to all the engaging speakers and stakeholders. Mr Chair, I would like to congratulate the McGregor Lions Health and Wellbeing Expo for their achievements. This event is a perfect example of an event that works with multiple community groups and different levels of government to ensure the seniors of Brisbane are well informed and cared for.
Further speakers, councillor Johnston?
Yes, thank you, Mr Chairman. I rise to speak on the outcome of the Supreme Court hearing on Thursday and CCRP matters. As are a few new councillors in this place, I'm going to put on the record what happened. Two years ago, almost to this week, we were in the budget debate and I was speaking in the planning section of the budget debate about the Dutton Park Fairfield Neighbourhood Plan, which was a current neighbourhood plan funded under the budget and under development. I also mentioned the Sherwood Graceful Neighbourhood Plan, a current neighbourhood plan funded for administration under the budget. Councillor Owen decided that I could not speak about these matters. When I questioned her in allowing every other councillor, about a dozen other councillors to speak about neighbourhood planning matters, she screamed her head off at me and the now Lord Mayor moved a motion-
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order to you councillor Owen.
I find councillor Johnston's comments untrue and offensive and I ask they be withdrawn.
Councillor Johnston, will you withdraw your comments?
No.
Now, one thing I will ask you to do though, can you please stick as close to the facts as you can and, and resist the urge to add-
Point of order.
I'll say shouted, I'll say shouted if she doesn't want to scream.
Point of order, Mr Chairman.
Point of order to you councillor Owen.
I have never screamed my head off at anyone in this place.
Councillor Johnston, please, please, we spend a lot of time in here asking for people to be courteous and I remind you of that at this point.
All righto. And I was then ejected from the chamber. Councillor Owen called pip-holed up here, she instructed pip-holed that I'd been removed, pip-holed at councillor Owen's direction, then called the police and the police threatened to arrest me. Now, when this all happened, I wrote to the CEO of council and said it had all been done improperly. Councillor Shree wrote to the CEO and said what councillor Owen was doing in this chamber was improper, and I'm just summarising. Councillor Sutton at the time rang the CEO's office and said what had happened was improper. All of this was ignored, all of it. The CEO then processed a complaint councillor Owen made about me to the CCRP. The CCRP held a hearing, having seen now the confidential documents from the CCRP, they didn't believe a word I said to them, councillor Owen told them that she had given me a direction under section 186a of the meeting's local law and she did not. Two years ago, I knew what they did was wrong. A year ago, when this decision was made by the CCRP, I said I was not going to put up with it. So I launched action in the Supreme Court to overturn the decision. On Thursday, the Supreme Court of Queensland completely upheld my application to the court and the decision was overturned. And I want to read some sections of the judgment into the record. Before I do, I will say the following for everybody listening down in Brisbane Square. One, Angela Owen Taylor, or Owen, did not properly expel me from this place. She could have avoided all of this, but instead she made a complaint about me. She knew what she did was wrong, she read the minutes. The CEO could have stopped it by not progressing the complaint, he knew that it was not done properly, he did not. The CCRP could have stopped this because it was clear on the face of the evidence that there had been no valid expulsion. None of these people acted fairly. Instead, they pursued me and I've had to go to the Supreme Court of Queensland to seek justice for this issue. And I'm going to read you some things from the judgment of the Supreme Court from Thursday. A chairperson in a meeting cannot have unfettered powers to direct councillors. The term 'direction' in sections 178, 2 and 3 must have statutory source, otherwise a chairman's whim or gesture may amount to a direction which a failure to comply with may amount to misconduct or consequential disciplinary action. The term 'direction' in section 178 cannot be so wide, it needs scope and definition. Such definition can only come from the rules of procedure and the powers given under the meeting's local law or City of Brisbane Act. A chairperson can only act in accordance with the rules of procedure and the powers given under the meeting's local law and City of Brisbane Act. Anything less than a duly-made direction or valid direction could be capricious and inconsistent with democratic representation and not to be necessary or convenient for the good rule and local government of Brisbane or to provide for the orderly and proper conduct of the council and committee proceedings. A purported direction is not a direction. The chairperson's direction must be made pursuant to the procedure of the meeting's local law or the powers they have under the meeting's local law. The statutory duty imposed on the chairman to ensure meetings or procedure are enforced must be observed or enforced. I'm aware of the arguments council made on the day, because I was sitting there and listened to it all and it just was appalling, the what council argued. They said nasty things about me, again in the court, and I thanked the judge for not repeating them. And that was all done by council's advocate. So this LNP administration allowed their barrister to stand up and say truly offensive things about me in the court and the judge has completely dismissed it. I'd like to go on and say from the judgment further, the transcript of the meeting does not suggest that any order was made under any particular statutory provision at all. The chairperson did not refer to any specific power that she was acting under when so directing the applicant. And I'll just move down to the next section. It's apparent that from the transcript of the meeting that two essential prerequisites to the suspension of the applicant and the making of a direction that she leave under section 21 procedure were not met. The chairperson did not warn the applicant that a further act of disorder may lead to the applicant's suspension for eight days. The chairperson did not move or call for another councillor to move a motion to suspend the applicant after the chairperson had given such a warning and decided that the councillor had committed a further act of disorder. The preconditions of section 21 of the meeting's local law were not complied with. Crucially, the applicant, that's me, was not warned that a further act of disorder may lead to suspension of the applicant for up to eight days. The applicant was given a final warning, but this was after the applicant had been suspended for a period of eight days and told to vacate the chamber and then directed to leave. This was not given in accordance with section 21. The chairperson stated that the applicant had been, inverted commas, lawfully directed by herself as the chairperson of council to leave and that the applicant had failed to comply with direction. Section 21 of the meeting's local law was not properly invoked when suspending the applicant for eight days. All conditions antecedent to its valid exercise were not satisfied. Accordingly, no duly-made or valid direction pursuant to section 21 of the meeting's local law was given to the applicant to leave, leave the meeting, and it goes on. It is fundamentally a complete repudiation of what happened in this chamber two years ago. I thank my legal team for their support, I want to thank councillor Griffiths particularly for his support. I, I hope it brings an end to what has been one of the most appalling periods of time in this place that I've ever, ever seen. What went on here for years under councillor Owen's chairmanship was not appropriate. The person who was entrusted by this community to oversee the rules of procedure failed to do so. She then sought to use her bad acts to make a complaint against me, to then make representations to the CCRP that I had been expelled under a section that I had not been and I've had to go to the Supreme Court to overturn this decision. All of this could have been avoided apart from the actions of councillor Owen and the CEO, Mr Colin Jensen. I call on the CEO to immediately remove the CCRP decision from the public record of this council. The Supreme Court of Queensland has determined it was invalid and has overturned its decision. It needs to be struck from the public record. That means the CCRP records of private and public and it also means from the council annual report. These things must be done or I will take further action. I'm also considering further action about the lies that have been told in the council minutes, which clearly state that I was given a direction under section 186a. The minutes of the council meeting, the raw transcript clearly shows that did not happen, clearly shows. Who in council wrote that in there? Did councillor Owen authorise it? It clearly wasn't true. So I, I feel this has been two years of the most awful period for me and it's the third time I've had to take this council to court, but I will not, I will not, under any circumstances, put up with the LNP administration trying to silence me, trying to unlawfully remove me from my place of business.
Councillor Johnston, your time's expired. Councillor Cumming?
Yeah, thank you, Mr Chair. Mr Chair, I'd like to speak briefly about an organisation in my area called Making It Home Safe, this is their t-shirt, nice colourful t-shirt. And they're an organisation, it's a community group and they were established in 2015 by a local woman, Nyree Mannion, to raise awareness in the long-term, of the long-term impact of traumatic head injury and to empower young people to create, communicate and implement safe driving practices. Nyree developed the project after living most of her life with her sister, who survived a traffic crash when she was young but suffered brain damage and sadly never made a meaningful recovery and has been in care for the past 26 years. It's estimated each year more than 11,000 Queenslanders are expected to acquire a brain injury, of them 4,000 suffer a serious disability. Motor vehicle accidents will be responsible for 70% of traumatic brain injury. Of this number, 70% will involve young people aged between 16 to 24 years, two-thirds of them will be male. The Making It Home project was first launched in schools to educate young people of the importance of driving safely. The important area, sorry, the following year, the Make It Home 100 programme was launched to support young drivers without access to a supervisor or registered vehicle to complete their logbook hours so they could get their driver's licence. And Nyree's group also observed Fatality Free Friday, which of course was last, last Friday, and they would like to promote safe driving for all and acknowledge the great works of the group. Nyree's a terrific organiser and someone who is very good at getting sponsorship from local organisations. And some of the sponsors she's managed to get around the Winter Manly area are the Port of Brisbane, Caltechs, Barton's, which is a big car yard in Winter Manly, the biggest, probably the biggest employer in the whole district, Bendigo Bank and the Winter Manly Leagues Club. And she's got, she's got vehicles now that the young drivers can use and volunteer supervisors so they get up their 100 hours. Back to Fatality Free Friday, it aims to have not a single road death in Australia for just one day. The idea is if drivers consciously think about road safety and safe driving for just one Friday in the year, that day's toll, which statistically is about 5.3 deaths, could be reduced to zero. Hopefully they'll drive safer for the next few days too and over time change their outlook completely, consciously thinking about safety each and every day they got behind the wheel. Sadly, of course, as we all know, the road toll has been shocking recently and obviously the more attention that is paid to messages like Making It Home Safely, the better it will be for the, all of us and the better it'll be for the Winter Manly area and the great work done by Nyree and Making It Home Safely.
Further speakers, councillor Howley?
Thank you, Chair, I rise to speak about Ida Hobbit. Friday the 17th of May is the International Day Against Homophobia, Biphobia, Intersexism and Transphobia and was celebrated in over 130 countries around the world. This significant day in the LGBTIQ plus calendar has been celebrated since 2005 and aligns with the date that homosexuality was removed from the International Classification of Diseases of the World Health Organisation in 1990. To celebrate this significant day in the LGBTIQ plus calendar, I was invited by council's LGBTIQ employee network, River City Pride, to proudly raise the rainbow flag on City Hall. It was humbling to receive waves from passersby at such a very early hour of the morning as, as we made a clear statement in support of Brisbane's LGBTIQ community. On the day, River City Pride also encouraged work areas to host informal events in their workplace to raise awareness and to raise money for Open Doors, a local LGBTIQ youth charity. Approximately 28 events, morning teas and barbecues were held across Brisbane Square, Green Square, South Regional Business Centre, North Regional Business Centre, Stafford Bus Depot, Darra Depot and Sherwood Depot. I was lucky enough to be able to drop into the event held at Stafford and thank the River City Pride team for the great work that they do in council. At all events, rainbow lanyards and pins were distributed to staff to enable them to show their support of Ida Hobbit. An outstanding $3,500 was raised for Open Doors. This is a significant increase on the 2,650 raised last year and to put this into perspective, $10 will pay for a young person's train fare to work or school return, $50 will buy food for three days, $120 will provide a roof over a young person's head for a night, $200 will pay for a young person to see a psychologist and $1,000 will- $200 will pay for a young person to see a psychologist, and $1,000 will pay for a psychologist to be on-site for one whole day and see multiple youths. The Story Bridge and Victoria Bridge were also lit up in rainbow colours. This act has not only been celebrated our local LGBTIQ community, but has been publicised via social media across the world, sending a clear message that Brisbane supports its LGBTIQ community. The week leading up to Ida Hobbit, the River City Pride team also partnered with Suncorp's LGBTIQ Employee Network and PWC to deliver an insightful forum titled 'Where are all the women?'. The forum explored the engagement and visibility of same-sex attracted women in the workplace and explored the term coined by PWC of the double-glazed ceiling. It was great to see these organisations come together to explore this important issue. It's also worthy, and I know that the Lord Mayor has already made this announcement, but just to finish, I'd like to say how very proud we all are that council was recognised with the Gold Employer status for its second year running at the National Australian Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Intersex Inclusion Awards. These awards celebrate the results of the Australian Workplace Equality Index, which sets the national benchmark. And also at this event, Andrea Keneffay, our Divisional Manager for City Planning and Sustainability and the Chair of the Inclusion Council, was awarded the Executive Leadership Award in recognition of her significant contribution as the executive sponsor of River City Pride. In conclusion, Chair, I'd just like to say how very proud I am of Brisbane City Council, the organisation. Since my time here as a councillor, which is sort of now about seven years, it's been an absolute eye-opener to me to see the number of opportunities that we provide to our employees to bring their whole self to work, and how very important it is for people to feel safe, to feel that they can come to work, and to know that they are supported. So I really want to thank Andrea for her work. I'd like to thank Luke Nixon too, who does an amazing job, and I'm absolutely thrilled that they include me regularly in the activities that they do, and long may that continue. And I'd like to thank our Lord Mayor for continuing the inclusivity of our wonderful city. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Strunk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Listen, I rise to speak tonight in regards to a festival that took place in my ward on Sunday, the Hocka Dragon Boat and Multicultural Festival. Now, this is a headline event for my ward, it has been for a number of years, and as it was for the Parkinson Ward and councillor Owen. This event continues to quite amaze me, the amount of people that have been coming along for, I think, more than a decade. Not, they haven't all been, when, I mean, Forest Lake wasn't always the venue, right? But they have seemed to make it their home now. And we had a number of dignitaries from the Taiwanese community, which was always good to see, and even some of our locals now are sort of coming down to have a look at what these dragon boats are all about, which was really gratifying to see that as well. We had a number of elected members. I think we had four councillors, one Lord Mayor, a federal member, and three state members, including one minister, Leanne Enoch. So it was just gratifying again to see that support that is given to this association to support a major event in their calendar, probably the major event in their calendar. And I'd just like to thank Brisbane City Council for supporting it through their programme. And I'd like to also thank my staff who were there manning a stall all day long. And, I mean, the weather held off, we got a little bit of rain, but in the end, everyone hung around to see what the outcome was for the community and the more professional racers as well. There was, I believe, there was 19 crews, and there was a lot of camaraderie amongst the boating crews as you walk over where they all set up, and you could just see that there was a lot of interaction between those boating crews, and they were all having just a great time to be out there. Now councillor Dick is, not councillor, sorry, the federal member, has now put the challenge out there that the elected members that are coming along, that come along, that we should have our own boat and participate in a race, or maybe just a demonstration of rowing, because I don't think we're probably all up to racing. But anyways, also councillor Mark is committed to putting a Kiwi boat together for next year as well. So it's really just good to see that we, in a bipartisan way, can come together to support a great organisation and a great community. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Further speakers? They're being now declared the meeting closed.